Recording in progress.
We'll call the order of the Board of Commissioners meeting for Douglas County, Nebraska, for Tuesday, April 29th, 2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge. First order of business is the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, and Mr. Chair.
Here. First, we have items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, and B, a call for a meeting set Tuesday, May 6th, 2025, as date for hearing on the certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions, which are items C through I, which we can vote on and block plus a German if desired. Motion should approve, C through I, plus a German from Rogers, second by Morgan. Was there anybody from the public that wanted to comment on any of the equalization resolutions? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go into our Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First, we'll do Section 1A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, and B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, April 26th, 2025. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Before we jump into our consent agenda, I will toss it to Commissioner Morgan for a very brief moment of special privilege to introduce some special guests.
Thank you, Roger. I'm fortunate to have four young ladies that are graduating from Marion High School soon, this next month, and one of them happens to be my granddaughter, Morgan Hockney, on the left side. Next, there's Maddie. Next to her is Izzy, and next to her is Elizabeth. And we had the four, plus another one of the young ladies from Marion out to Arizona to stay with us for a little celebration of their graduation coming up soon. They're all going to different universities. If you don't mind, having done this before, I'd greatly appreciate if we do a quick picture with all the commissioners, because they were supposed to maybe visit a government body, and they requested the county board, and I thought that was really super. So I'm proud of all of them and what they planned to do. Morgan plans to be a veterinarian, going to go to Boulder, and they'll tell you, a college, so we'll do a quick picture.
Okay.
Thanks. And Commissioner Garcia, I want to thank you very much for that privilege, and thanks again to all the commissioners.
Definitely. All right. We will keep going on the agenda here into consent agenda, where we have items A through N. Do I have a motion and second for discussion? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. We'll jump into dialogue. Does anybody have comments or questions on any of the items? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just reading through here. Do we have one on the contract, the teaching contract?
Yes.
Yes. That's the one I want.
Commissioner, it's H.
H. Just for the public record, Resolution H approves a three-year collective bargaining agreement, labor contract between the Douglas County and the Youth Center Education Association, covering teacher classifications within the Department of the Douglas County Youth Center for a period covering January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2027. And we have a representative of the Youth Center here, who I'll ask you a question in a minute, but first, I'd like to have Marco San Martin from our office just outline what this contract encompasses.
Sure, Commissioner. Marco San Martin, Douglas County Administration. Yeah, so this is a three-year labor agreement. This cover, like you said, it covers 2025, calendar 2025, '26 to '27, and primarily, it does implement some new wage scales. And in particular, 2025 has some substantial increases for teachers. And so the three classifications that are covered, it's a general ed teacher, a special ed teacher, and then I have a physical ed teacher there at the DCYC, at the Douglas County Youth Center. If you have any other questions, I do actually have the starting pays if you're...
Yeah, the starting pay has been raised, I believe.
Right. So the starting pay for, in this contract, and this will, again, is for calendar 2025, starting pay for the general education teacher is $30.11, and that's the same for the physical ed teacher. Then special education teacher is $32.20 is the starting pay.
Thank you. And we do have, as I indicated, a representative of the Youth Center here. If you could introduce...
Sure. Mark LaFleur, Douglas County Youth Center.
And thanks for coming down. We teach a lot of kids at the Youth Center, and we want to make sure that they stay up to snuff for the brief stays that they're usually with us. Could you tell us what the situation is relative to our teaching staff and our need for new teachers?
Well, since COVID, we've lost a few educators and had a difficult time replacing them. And this contract gives us the ability to go out and be competitive and hire educators. We've been three teachers down over the past three and a half years.
And this will help us fill that gap?
Yes, it will. It will assist us with our math class, and it will free up one of our special education teachers to work more directly with those IEP students.
If you know, how many teachers do we have on staff right now?
Right now, we have eight teachers and one career center person.
And I think you indicated we needed two more.
Yes. With the one that we've just hired, we would need two more.
Okay. And what's the population today of the Youth Center, if you know?
Today, we have 95 youth in the facility.
So if we had 10 teachers, which is our authorized complement, we'd have about nine kids per teacher, which isn't a bad student-teacher ratio.
Yes. Under PRIA, we're at an eight-to-one ratio. So we're very fortunate to have the low student population ratio with our educators, because we have a lot of students that need the extra support, one-on-one support.
Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on consent agenda? Commissioner Borgeson?
I just wanted to make note that those costs are picked up by the state.
Yes, correct.
Not the county taxpayers.
Yes, ma'am. You're 100% correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on consent agenda? Larry?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Couple of quick questions on number C, J, K, maybe a couple others, mostly related to, number one, the use of the ARPA money to fund positions. Now, what happens when the federal government, which they very well might do, asks for their money back or stop providing money through ARPA? Now, maybe you're getting it from the state, but those funds could disappear any day. How will you fund that position if that happens? My property taxes are so high, I may have to sell. So I would like you to cut where you can. So stop taking the funds that might disappear for a position, because you'll have to cough it up somehow. A traveling WIC clinic, do we really need that? Is that not something that we can shave out of the budget for other programs that aren't getting enough? How long are we going to have to put up with this public health emergency thing? On a number of items here, it's quoted, because that allows you to do anything that you please in county government. And some of it is against the citizens' wishes, against the taxpayers' pocketbook. So if it's such a public health emergency, and you can see that it's going clear through 2028, then maybe you need to call in the federal government to help solve this public health emergency. I guess that does it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Following up a little bit of that, in item J, we have a resolution authorizing a cash transfer from administrative ARPA to the Health Department for the community health worker position put forth by Commissioner Rogers. And this is a $205,000 budgeted item. The backup on this says $205,000 will be transferred from the ARPA funds to the Health Department to cover expenses related to this new community health worker position. And I'd just like a little more, I guess, information on what this position is. $205,000 can't be for the salary for this position entirely. That's a pretty high salary. So if we could just have a little more background on that, I'd appreciate it.
The $205,000 is for a two-year position. It's a health worker that will have a three-way agreement with the Bridge and the Empowerment Network. So the position is for two years, its benefits, and other things that come with it. The money is being transferred, so it's there in hand. There has been discussion for a while about what the Health Department has in the budget to do it. So they asked for the money to be transferred, because right now, other funds that may be accessible are being used to make up for some cuts that have been rescinded through the new administration, and there's some accounts that they're waiting to see what may happen with these changes. So basically, it's a two-year position that'll be in partnership with the Bridge and the Empowerment Network to serve a navigator in the Northeast Precinct of the, of OPD.
Okay. So if I understand this, and it does say to connect families and community members with essential health and social services, so this would be like $100,000 a year for two years for this position in the, I think you mentioned the Northeast portion of, is it Omaha Public Schools?
No. Well, I'd say the Northeast Precinct, in general, the OPD's Northeast Precinct definition.
Oh, the police precinct.
Yeah. The goal of it is to, for, to work with the Empowerment Network in respects to, there are some community services that are working with delinquent kids, and the goal is for the Bridge to make the gap up into the complete family resource that they may need from the preventative view. So it is two years. There's the, there's the 70, roughly 70,000 salary a year, plus the added benefits that come. So that takes you to the 205.
Okay. And would this person be a Douglas County employee?
Technically, they would. Within a grid, that's where they'll go through the Health Department as a health worker, so they get the benefits, and then it'll be agreement with the Bridge and the Empowerment Network for them to work down there, to be in the district and in contact with the Northeast Precinct Captain and other service providers.
And what would happen at the end of two years to this position?
We evaluate what's there, and hopefully, if it gives the numbers that we can, we'll try to fund it through private money.
Thank you.
Is that it? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else on consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. That takes us to proclamations and recognitions. We have one, item 5A, is a recognition of a county employee who is retiring. We have Richard Hannah, who has worked for the Douglas County General Garage for 25 years. I don't believe Richard is here with us, right? Okay. So we want to recognize his service to Douglas County citizens for his long tenure of 25 years. So I'll take a motion and second. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote. All right.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. That then takes us into a presentation. Item 6A, a presentation of Douglas County employees' pension over the last 25 years. And I just want to, as Lori makes her way down, set up the context that this presentation is being given not because there's any new crisis or any new kind of big change in our pension. I've requested this presentation alongside some other presentations that I'm hoping we can do in the next couple months, just to give a comprehensive picture of our financial standing as a county entity and for the board to have all of these different perspectives of financial angles to both our budget and our pension, our reserves, and other things that we're facing, such as the cap placed on us by the Legislature in 2024. All these things play into how we should manage our funds in a comprehensive way. So we are kicking off this series of presentations from different angles, starting with the pension.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here today to talk to you about the Douglas County pension and 25-year history, and talking about the balance and the funding ratio, and kind of decisions and things that have impacted that, not just decisions, but also, of course, market fluctuations and things like that. So just to give you an idea of where we are at and the health of the plan today. I also wanted to shout out to ACG and Hub, our actuary, for providing me with this information, because I have, you know, a year and a half's worth. So they gave, they helped to fill in the gaps for the last 25 years. So a lot of this information, they helped me pull together. So the pension system, I'm just going to give a quick executive summary. The pension system has two components for funding assets and meeting liabilities. So as this flow chart shows here, the two items that help contribute and increase, of course, the pension fund assets are contributions and investment earnings. And then the future liabilities, such as the expenses and the benefit payments to retirees, are the outflows. The future liabilities can be affected by benefit increases, such as cost of living adjustments, as well as other assumption changes, such as actuarial rate of return assumption. So the Douglas County pension was quite strong for a period of time, but it has had some challenges. The board has addressed these challenges by making some changes to the plan, and our funding levels have been getting back on track. So I'm going to walk you through a couple of the highlights over the last 25 years, but it might be better to kind of look at the flow chart, I mean, the bar chart, two pages back, so that you can kind of see how it fluctuates as these changes impacted the funding ratio. The funding ratio, by the way, is the value of the plan assets divided by the present value of the liabilities. And the primary drivers of the funding ratio include factors such as the contribution percentage, both from the participants, as well as from the county, any plan changes that were made, such as Rule of 75, market investment returns, of course, is very impactful, positively and negatively, of course, and actuarial assumptions, such as mortality rates. And we do have Hub, our actuary, do an experience analysis every other year to ensure that our assumptions are in line with the actuarial, with our actual experience. So just making sure that we don't have assumptions saying that, you know, mortality rates are short, and then our actual experience is that people live 10 years longer. So we actually do that. Every other year, we take a kind of a check on that to make sure that our assumptions are in line with what we are actually experiencing. So from 1984 to 1996, there was a period of about 13 years. The plan was essentially 100% funded over that period. I mean, it fluctuated maybe from 98% to 104%, but it was, you know, largely fully funded. In 1996, the Rule of 75 was implemented for law enforcement, and the benefit formula was increased to 2% per pay, 2% of pay per year for year of service for new, for everyone. Previously, it had been 1% for service before January 1st of 1962, and 1.5% for service after that. In addition to the Rule of 75 and the increase in the benefit formula, a 4% COLA was given. So then in 1997, the Rule of 75 was implemented for all others. So not just law enforcement, but all county, all county employees. In 1998, a 3% COLA was given, cost of living adjustment. In 1999, the funded ratio fell to 93%. So that's the first bar on the left here of this chart, because I asked ACG to bring it back 25 years. In 2000, a 4% COLA was given. By 2001, the funded ratio had fallen to 73%. In 2002, 3% COLA was given, and in 2003, the funded ratio fell to 65%. By 2005, the funded ratio had fallen to 63%, and I think that the decision had made that we need to make some changes here to make sure that we have long-term viability for the plan. So in 2006, member and county contribution rates increased from 5.5% to 6.5%, and the funded ratio was then 66%. In 2007, they increased the contribution rates for both members and the county, another percentage, so from 6.5% to 7.5%, and the funded ratio remained the same, 66%. In 2008, they increased it a third time, another percentage, from 7.5% to 8.5%. But despite all those three increases, three years in a row, of course, 2008, as you know, the market, I don't want to say crashed, but tanked, the Great Recession, and the funded ratio dropped to 58%. So obviously, the inputs, as I discussed before, the contribution percentages, but the market is obviously a huge factor in this as well. In 2011, the Rule of 75 was eliminated for all new hires after June 30th of 2011, and the benefit formula was reduced back down for all those new hires to be 1.5% of pay per year for service. So the Rule of 75, then, with that 2%, it'd be a max of 60% of your pay when you retire. For everyone after 630 of 2011, the max is now 45%. Then from 2013 to 2024, assets performed pretty well, and the funded ratio improved to 68% by the end of 2023. We will get the 2024 funded ratio number from our actuaries at Hub at the May Pension Committee meeting. And I did call Glenn yesterday just to see if we had that early, but they're still working on it. So don't have it yet. So while we're below the national average, but we are continuing to close the gap to our peers on this. We've taken some good measures. This chart here probably looks a little clearer on your, on your slides that you're holding, I think. But this one has, this is the five-year rolling returns net of fees. The line across, the horizontal line across the middle, that's the 7.5% actuarial rate of return that we have in our plan. A lot of plans have dropped that below 7.5%, but we have actually decided to keep it there for now as an assumption, because our average over the last five years has been 7.5%. Our average over the last 10 years has been 8%. The average over the last 25 years was only 6.9%. But Hub actually had information back 41 years, and so the average over that 41-year period was 8.5%. So we continue to look at that and make sure that the 7.5% isn't too aggressive. But for right now, we feel like it's reasonable, and we are holding that as our assumption. On this slide, I'm just going to direct your attention to the far right, since we're looking at the last 25 years. At the beginning of the year 2000, the Douglas County pension system's assets totaled approximately 122 million. Over the 25-year period ending December of 2024, the pension system distributed benefits and expenses net of contributions of approximately 70 million. And you would expect a mature plan to have that be an outflow, right? Because you'll have more retirees. So that's, that's a healthy number. That's fine. Over that same period, the pension has earned approximately 406 million in investment earnings. And at the end of 2024, the Douglas County pension system assets totaled approximately 458.5 million. This is just a chart of what that looks like on a graph over the last 25 years. So if only our liabilities were 100% in sync with that, but we're getting close. So we have, I'm very happy with our investment managers. I'm happy with our actuary. We've got a good pension committee who is very earnest in making sure that this is, that the assets will be there to pay out benefits to all of the employees upon their retirement. So any questions?
Thank you, Lori. Before we jump into questions, could you also give us some context on the state probationary status and what that means for us as a county?
Yes. If you are under 80% funded, then the chair of the Pension Committee, which is me, has to go down and testify in front of the Retirement Systems Committee every year and explain why we are behind, what steps we're taking to close that gap, and, you know, that, that sort of thing. I don't want to have to go down there and explain anything that would be making that gap wider. So I think I had explained in an email to the chair earlier, I'm going to be like the mean junkyard dog when it comes to any... the Chair earlier, I'm going to be like the mean junkyard dog when it comes to anybody that wants to try to touch that pension until we are at least to the 80%, because I don't love going down there and getting grilled on that. And, not just that, but also personally, I want to make sure that those funds are there for the employees.
All right. Thank you so much, Lori. We'll jump to questions and comments, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you for this.
Sure.
And having been here only two years, I, I think this is a great look back for you and for all of us.
It was eye-opening.
Pensions have very long tails. What happens a long time ago affects. And I just want to recap this, so, because I remember this from way back when. I think when my father was on this board, the pension was established, and when I was a county employee...
Your father was on this board? I did not know that.
In the 70s and 80s, I actually participated in the pension. And so, you know, going back, I think that you make a good point here. From 84 to 96, it was 100% funded. Actually, from its inception to 96, it was 100% funded. So, we have a very long, successful, 100% funded period. And then, the Rule of 75 was implemented in 96. And you can do the Rule of 75 if you pay for it, and I don't think it was adequately supported at that time. So, you see immediate impacts from 100% to 93% in 99, 73% in 2001, 65% in 2003, and a low of 58% in 2008. Now, except for that last one, these failures of our fund to perform at 100% as it had was not as a result of the stock market. Stock market was booming in the 90s and early aughts, and it wasn't until '08 until we had a big downturn. It was because of policy taken by this board to implement, I guess you would say, unsafe practices in terms of the Rule of 75 that wasn't adequately supported. And that's clear from this pension analysis. We have now engaged in a long crawlback from 58%, and we are now at 68%. You know, it's taken us 15 years to get there, but we're at least headed in the right direction, barring another catastrophic fall in the stock market. And I think what you show here in our performance to date as of the first of the year is, you know, a fairly healthy increase in our portfolio. Unfortunately, since January, we don't have those numbers yet. I can just say, from my personal portfolio, and this is probably shared with others, there has not been a great performance since January 1st. And I think that's widespread, is probably going to reflect in here. We don't have a lot of control over that, but we do have a lot of control over how we run our own system. And I think the lesson learned here is the implementation of the Rule of 75 in 96 and 97 was catastrophic for the financial integrity of this program. Unfortunately, we've been able to turn that around, but we went from 100% for decades to 58% in not a lot of time. And we are now back at 68% after a better part of a quarter of a century. And so, I, I appreciate this, because it's not often that we get something as clear as this, and you have to look at it over, over time. So, thank you for your research, and I think that it will inform us going forward in terms of our pension policy. This is a very, very clear document, and I urge the public to take a look at it. I presume it will be on our website. I just want to say thanks for all your hard work on this.
Oh, thank you. It will be up. It was not up earlier, because I just finished it yesterday. But Sharon will put it up after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Fahey.
First, thank you very much for this presentation. A couple of questions. At what point do we plan to revisit the rate of return actuarial analysis?
We look at that every, every year.
When during the year?
Well, I look at it probably quarterly, but at least annually. As a board, we will look at, especially when we get, every May, Hub, who is our actuary, used to be Silverstone, but I'm pretty proud of myself for finally calling him Hub instead of Silverstone, they come in and they give an annual presentation on the actuarial results.
And that will be in May?
Mm-hmm.
How concerned, in your opinion, should the Board be given that the, we did lose a little bit of ground from 2020 to 2023 in terms of fund, overall funding percentage?
You know, I'm not terribly concerned about that. We did lose a little bit of ground. You know, 2022, you know, market returns, our, our five-year rolling net return that year was 5.58, so obviously, under the 7.5% that we have as our assumption for actuarial rate of return. You know, depending on what the market does this year. Again, the first quarter wasn't terrible. March was a little shaky. April is when things really went, if anyone's watching, obviously, the markets and investments, April was the painful month so far. So, you know, all, all I can say is we will keep a very close eye on it, and if that 7.5% still seems to be, starts to be out of line with what we're actually seeing, then we'll definitely have to adjust that down.
Notably, the national average did not lose ground on funding. So, what, in your opinion, contributed to that, that loss of funding percentage, minor though it may be? What factors contributed?
Over the last 25 years, are you looking at...
Over the last three, over the last three years.
Oh, the last three years.
Because the national funding average rose and plateaued, and ours lost ground.
Yeah. You know, it has to just be our investment mix, because we really didn't make any changes that would have affected, you know, no Rule of 75, no COLAs, and, you know, nothing like that. So, it has to just be the investment mix. We did just do a rebalancing of that to make sure that we are in line with, you know, what we believe to be the best allocation of assets between fixed income and equities and all, all that type of thing. So...
Is there a way, and apples and oranges to some degree, but when we look at the five-year rolling returns, that that could be compared with just what the S&amp;P did over that time, or, or other, you know, notable index funds, or things of that nature?
Are you saying, can we just compare these returns to, to that?
General market?
Yes and no. But this, this has a very long-term perspective, so sometimes those equities are shorter-term, you know. So, we will have things that might be lower return, but lower risk, because it's, it's a pension. So, we really want to make sure that they are secure, that they are stable. So, sometimes, you know, when you do that, your mix might be, again, a little bit lower return than, so...
Sure. So, in your opinion, it wouldn't probably be particularly informative to do that?
It's a benchmark. It's something to look at, for sure. It should be somewhat correlated, but it won't be exact.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
We'll go to Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you, and thank you, Lori, for this. On page five of the graph, there's an explanation for the Douglas County funded ratio and then the national average. But then on the 99 to 2009, there's a black on top of the blues of the bar graph. What's the black represent?
On page five?
Yeah. So, see where there, there's two blues. One is the Douglas County funded ratio, and the other's the national. But then on top of those, there's a black bar. What does, what does that mean?
Hold on. Which black bar? Can you show me on your slide?
Yeah, I see it too.
Yeah. Or maybe it's just, because it doesn't correlate with the numbers. If, if you take the black bar away, it does.
Okay, hold on. Yeah. So, I made this in PDF last night, and Kim kindly switched it to a slideshow this morning for me. So, I'm wondering if there's a, is there a black bar up there that I'm not seeing?
Oh, maybe that one doesn't show the black bar.
So, the PDF doesn't have it. It might have been something that just happened in the quick conversion, which is my fault for asking at the last minute for her to change that over to a... Oh, yeah. I don't know what the black bar is. I don't know.
Oh.
We'll, we'll give you guys the, the PDF version, because I think something just...
So, that, just ignore that.
Yeah, just ignore that.
Okay. And then, I do appreciate your comment in terms of, you know, right now in, or in 2023, we're funded at 68%. And I'm of the opinion, no matter how minimal a change that is brought forth to us to make a change in our pension, would not be prudent this ti, at this time for the plan, and especially for our employees. So, I hope we stick to that. But again, I thank you very much for the presentation on the pension today.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I do remember you expressing sentiments that no, even a small change wouldn't be one that you would, you know, not, not be an advocate for, if it's going to negatively impact even to a small amount, and I concur. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
We'll go to Commissioner Morgan.
Lori, thank you very much. Appreciate it, and your work there on the Pension Board. May 22nd, we'll have a real briefing of where we are so far this year.
Yes, May 22nd.
And you correct me if I state something incorrectly, but we'll look at that at that time. The, you know, the 7 and 1/2% return that you talked about the last five years is a very, very healthy return. I mean, people are buying buildings and investments hoping that they can get to the 6% level on those when they're buying a Walgreens or some other kind of long lease Starbucks or something with the 15-year lease. They'll look at 6% being a great number. And it wasn't too long ago that they were doing it at about a 4% cap rate on buildings when interest rates were much lower, probably three to four years ago. I guess, being old, you get a little concerned about things with the higher interest rates and the earnings. I mean, 7 and 1/2% going forward for the next five years is an unbelievably good number, that I happen to worry, how do you maintain that 7 and 1/2? So, I think we do have to be cautious, as Commissioner Borgerson said, and I think all of us realize. I'll say something a little bit unusual, but I know you go to the state, and I know Joe LaRenzha always said he liked following the city, I think, is what, what he said. Where is the city pension fund roughly? Do you know about?
I know they were, their funded ratio was lower than ours, but I, I can't remember what it was. I...
Yeah. I thought it was in the 60s or something.
Either low 60s or maybe even high 50s. I don't want to misspeak.
So, we do have to be cautious. And May 22nd, we'll have something, and we might even think about just giving a few-minute update on what we learn going forward as our people do that. But as you said earlier, Lori, they've done a great job, as far as I'm concerned, and I've been lucky enough to serve on that Pension Board much of the last 10 years. So, we'll see where we are. But thank you for your good work.
Thanks. And I will say, like, two years ago, when I went in to, or, you know, to do the analysis from two years ago, because it's always in arrears, and we were the only pension going in front of the board, or in front of the Retirement Committee down at the state that had a positive return. It was like 0.4% that year. Everybody else was negative. So, but I was still, you know, happy to wear that feather in my cap and say, you know, at least we were positive that year.
And we do look at options.
That was after 2022, I think.
As far as farmland and some of that thing.
Yeah, we look at out-of-the-box options.
Didn't move forward with it, but we, you know, let people come before us to talk about ideas that might be there.
All right. We'll go to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lori, explain, I just want to make sure. It's been said, we have one pension, right?
One pension.
Okay. And there's one pension with what's some different, I wouldn't say benefits, but different arrangements for different bargaining groups?
I believe there's only kind of two different arrangements in that. One for, is it FOP? Marcus, could, Marcus, could you elaborate on that? What'd you say? I think it's, is it FOP 8 that has a little bit different, but they do contribute a little bit more as well. They contribute, I think it's 2% more, to get that little bit different benefit. But everybody else is in the same bucket.
But everybody, we're on one pension. We're not like the city where you have...
Not two separate pensions. It's one pension, one bucket of funds that everyone would be paid out of.
Thank you.
FOP 2 and...
Two and...
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Yeah. So, Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. So, there's, there's three, there's three different ones. There's the, well, there's four, because if you call it Rule of 75, and then what was implemented for the employees after, after June of 2012?
2011.
2011. And then, we negotiated a different, same pension plan, but different aspects of it, terms of it for FOP 2, which is, you could kind of call like a Rule of 85, kind of a hybrid. And then we did something similar, but not exactly the same as FOP 2. We did it for FOP 8. So, really, there's, within the same plan, there's four different arrangements within that plan.
Arrangements, but not a different plan?
Not a different plan. It's all one bucket. Yep.
Just some folks will be getting Rule of 75, some won't, and then some specific, if you're in FOP 2 or FOP 8, there are other hybrid kind of determinations on how much you contribute and how much you will get paid out. What was that?
I'm assuming that, that's not unusual?
You know, that, I, no.
Okay.
That I actually don't have reference on, but I could find out.
For government, for government, that's not unusual, because you have bargaining and it's a mandatory subject of collective bargaining to bargain for pension benefits. So, no, it's not unusual in government.
Okay, got it.
All right. I'll take a quick round on my end. So, the, the final slide, Lori, that 458 million number, that's our current balance as of the last tally?
Yep.
Okay. And so...
As of 12/31.
Got it. Which parallels the fact that we're about 68% funded, right?
Right.
So, if we were to be at 100% funded, just hypothetically, we would need more, like, along the lines of like a $800 million, or something like that, as a rough estimate?
Higher. Yes, absolutely.
Or higher, yeah. Okay. And so, 458 million is what we have as a total pot, the one pot we were just talking about. Is there like a, a yearly burn rate of like how much goes out from the pot as far as like actual payment towards pensions? Do you have like a rough figure?
I have, in dollars, it was roughly, what was it, 70? It's on that slide. 70 million, I think. But as a percentage of burn rate, that's a, you know, that would be interesting to look at. I don't know. That would, because that would be something to watch. Although, like I said, we, you know, we'll expect with a mature plan that it will be, that line should be a negative number, should be an outflow, right? Because the contributions coming in will probably not exceed the amounts paid out. You're going to have to kind of rely on investment returns at that point to help supplement.
Yeah. And that, that expenditure, the burn rate, would obviously be balanced out with what's going in as far as contributions, plus interest from investments. So, and I don't know if we had a chart that kind of compares the two in regards to which years maybe there was more expenditure than revenue, or has there, in recent history, have we always come out positive, I'm assuming, at least in recent history?
I, yes, positive in recent history, for sure. I mean, you can kind of even, you know, see that, except for when return on investment is, is down, you know. Other than that, it's been a positive.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much for, for this kind of big picture of where we're at and kind of where we want to be. I know there's kind of schedules of trying to get at 100% by, what is our latest estimate, like 2040, 2050?
Yes, somewhere in there. I should know that off the top of my head, but I apologize. I don't remember off the top of my head, but...
No, that's fine. So, you know, we have these scales that, you know, if we stay at 7, 7.5% return or higher, then we expect to get at 100% fully funded by like 2040, 2050, something along those lines. And that's it, that's if, of course, you know, those returns are what we expect them. So, those assumptions that you were talking about...
Market return assumptions, and then also just the underlying assumptions in the plan that mortality rates are, where we think, you know, life expectancy and that kind of thing.
Alongside other variables that could be thrown in or, or not thrown into the mix of everything that relates to the pension. So, thank you so much for that. So, thank you so much for that. I'm going to go ahead and jump back to Commissioner Kepner.
And just following up on this, some high point recaps. So we have 458 million in the, in the fund, which equals about a one-year county budget. We're a little over that, I think now.
We are over that, yeah.
That's about a year's expenditure for Douglas County, all in the pension fund. And we're at 68% of where we should be. The estimation to get to where Commissioner Garcia was talking about is that we would average that seven and a half percent that we have looking back. But if you look at the returns from the 2008 recession, those were all way significantly under that. And I just point this out because since January, the stock market's been down, as of this morning, 5.7%, which would put us on a kind of that slide. We hope that that doesn't happen, but it's looking not great. And so that would push our 100% goal back if we experienced another three or four years of.
It would, it would make the crawl back longer.
Right, right. And those are imponderables, but right now, if you had to take a snapshot today, we're going to have to really perform for three quarters here to get to seven and a half percent in, in 2025.
Yes.
Thank you, that, that's great. Thanks for the information. It's not great news, but it's great to know where we're at.
I mean, the good news is we're climbing back, that's, that's the good news. And you think you've got a pension board, pension committee that's very dedicated to making sure that that, that this plan is solvent and, and, you know, not making decisions that would negatively impact the long-term health of that plan.
And you make an interesting point, that you got to look at these things in a very long context, because, you know, we went from 100% to where we are now very quickly, but it's taken us an enormous amount of time to get back. And if you factor in the goal of, say, 2050, that means it takes a half a century to get back. And, you know, that's how these pension plans work when you, when you make a mistake like the Rule of 75.
I mean, I'm sure intentions were probably good. It was, you know, when that was implemented and it looked like we had dollars, so I don't question that.
Things like that will work if you, if you fund them. I mean, if you make the contributions equal the expense, and that didn't happen. You know, there are other pension systems, I mean, the federal system or others that you can look at that are, you know, pretty much 100% funded.
Yeah, our, our peers are doing a little stronger and they probably didn't have something like that that kind of notched us back just for a little bit.
But thank you for this, it's, it's better to know than not. Ignorance is not bliss in this case, so thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and go to Commissioner Borges.
Thank you. And because of the state of our market today, and you all are going to revisit that on May 22nd, is that correct?
Yes.
What Commissioner Morgan said, I think that just a quick update to where we are would be good to, to know.
Okay.
So maybe just come back with one, you know.
With a one-slide update saying here's, because yeah, this is almost a year old at this point, yeah.
Right. And then, um, do you have a graph for the, for the payout amount? So like in 2000, this much was paid out, in 2001, this one was paid out, and this much was paid out?
I don't, but I could, I could do that. I could pull that together.
And in correlation to that with the Rule of 75, I mean, it started with law enforcement and then we actually, in my opinion, got bad advice and went to all employees, which then, along with the colas that were given in these other years, really tanked.
And the 2008 Great Recession, that was huge, too.
Tanked the, the plan. But how many employees do we know are left that qualify for the Rule of 75?
I can get that number. I, I do know that most of the pension calcs that run across my desk that, you know, HR prepares and then I do a double check and, on the calcs and sign off on them, most of them are still Rule of 75. Like there's, on occasion, I get somebody that's a newer, you know, a hire since 2011 that's retiring and that gets only the 45% payout, but most of them are still Rule of 75 folks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the presentation? If not, we'll go ahead and conclude. Thank you so much, Lori, much appreciated. We'll move forward here beyond presentations and jump into committees. Under Finance, we have our Budget Report as presented. Under HR, we have our Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service also as presented. Today, we do have a need for executive session for the purposes of litigation, contract negotiation, and labor negotiation. Before I take a motion, I do want to note that next week I have a county business-related conference in Los Angeles, so myself, I will be gone next week. Vice Chair Friend will be leading the meeting for us next week, so just a quick note on that. I'll take a motion in a second for executive session. Motion by Morgan, second by Friend. I'll take that vote.
Motion passes 7 to 0.
Thank you. The board will now go into executive session for the purposes of litigation, contract negotiations, and labor negotiations.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. We are adjourned at eleven oh voting yes all right make that seven to zero. We are adjourned at eleven oh seven AM.